We are now recording.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Secretary, good afternoon. This is the appointed time for the regular meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees. Today is Thursday, January 19th. If I could ask for a roll call, please.
Bratton.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Cisneros.
Here.
De La Cruz, not present. Duran?
Present.
No. Justino is not present. Shelby?
Present.
Soell?
Excuse me, present.
Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon again, everyone. Thank you for being here. This is the portion of our agenda for public comment. Before I start that, Ms. Sadi Pateen, I believe you have somebody to introduce to us.
Yes, thank you so much. Trustees, I just want to take a quick moment to introduce to you Tinny Chen. Tinny recently joined the State Bar's Strategic Communications as a senior program analyst, and she is here cross-training. Considering the work that it takes to manage board meetings and support board meetings, we needed an extra person in the event that there was an absence. Tinny will be that person. So welcome, Tinny. We may be seeing more of her.
Good morning, good afternoon, and welcome. I'm going to put you on the spot for a little second if you want to introduce yourself briefly with some background.
Yes, hi. As Louisa said, I'm with the Office of Strategic Communications and Stakeholder Engagement, and I'm happy to be here to support as much as I can with Louisa and Alfredo and everything they have to do with the board meetings. So, nice to meet you all.
We're glad to have you. And certainly nice to see the room fuller than it has been in a very long time. I hope that is an indication of continued things to come. As I said, this is the portion of the meeting for public comment. State Bar staff will attempt to call members of the public in the order that they appear in the attendee pool. For those of you who are participating by Zoom video, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It's a hand icon that appears at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the board, please click on that hand icon now, and State Bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those who are participating by phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. Doing so will alert staff that you would like to make a comment, and will call on you in the order in which you have been put into the queue. We do have a very full agenda today and tomorrow, and so accordingly, I'm going to ask that public comment be limited to three minutes per speaker. There will be a timer that appears on the screen so that you can follow along if you'd like. You will also be verbally alerted when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the timer will flash at your final 10 seconds. We have a public speaker in the room. He's a familiar face. I'd like to recognize Mr. Andrew Tuft and say welcome back to the State Bar. And public comment is open if you'd like to address the board. Mr. Tuft has requested to go last, and I will grant that request certainly, of course, gladly. Madam Secretary, do we have folks waiting in the queue?
We have one hand raised. Todd Hill wishes to address the board.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hill, once your microphone is activated, you'll have three minutes, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here. I'll be quick. The agenda item that I'm particularly focused on is the proposed creation of a confidential class of employees related to the State Bar's work. As I mentioned in an earlier meeting of a different group that did include some members here, in 2004, Proposition 59 was passed. It's the Sunshine Act, and that granted basically the public right of access to the business done by government agencies to its accord. There is a government section 6255 that does preserve the right of boards and government offices to have specifically meetings that are in closed session or engage in practices that may be considered closed. In general, in private organizations, that, of course, is considered to be sort of fundamental, the ability to deliberate. But here, the problem is that the mandate is very specific, and it's its own litmus test. Pursuant to the State Bar Act, Section 001.1, protection of the public is of the highest priority, no matter the conflict of interest. That is the conflict of interest to the State Bar. And so, when you try to measure my right to public access, right, to this notion of your right to keep things secret, there's something very, very strange, because most of the time that would fail as a test. Last thing, very, very quick, I'll try to keep it, is this notion of two sets of things, two sets of books, two sets of rules, two sets of processes, two sets of laws, two sets of the ability to administrate things, a parallel judiciary. Those things are actually of critical concern here, and they're not this notion where it's so far stated that, you know, again, executive power granted without oversight is legislative, quasi-legislative power, as the administrative arm of the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Tuft, you're up. You seem a little more casually dressed than the last time I saw you, sir.
Can neither confirm nor deny that observation. It's a pleasure to be here today. I totally recognize your busy schedule and the need for limited public comment. I've been workshopping this for months, and I think I'm at like 3:45, but I'm going to try as fast as I can. I just request special dispensation. If I go a minute longer, I'm here to recognize a very important person who's dedicated 36 years to the State Bar, and if I just have an extra minute or two to recognize him, I hope that's agreeable. So, the reason why I'm here today is to provide public comment to you, the Board of Trustees, and frankly, the public, and about a very significant individual and a very significant employee of the State Bar who will be undertaking his well-deserved retirement in just a few weeks. Randall D. Fantorum, also known as Randy, or Randy D., or as I call him, the Yoda of California legal ethics, will be retiring after approximately 36 years with the State Bar of California. Randy began working with the State Bar in 1987 as a law clerk on the Ethics Hotline, where he served on a casually hourly basis. After graduating law school and becoming admitted to the bar in 1988, he joined the Ethics Hotline as a full-time employee, and shortly thereafter, an attorney position became available, and Randy was hired into that role. Randy has worked in the Office of Professional Competence under its various iterations and titles his entire career, except for a brief period where he headed the Law Corporations Department following the shutdown of the State Bar in 1998. The case that led to the restoration of the funding for the State Bar's essential functions following the 1998 shutdown is a case named Enray Attorney Discipline. In that case, the California Supreme Court observes that the Office of Chief Trial Counsel and the State Bar Court are self-evident parts of the attorney discipline system. I think everyone would agree. However, in the very next paragraph of that opinion, the court specifically references the State Bar's Ethics Hotline as providing an essential function of comprehensive, an essential function of a comprehensive discipline system, as the hotline assists attorneys to perform legal services competently in an ethical manner. This both helps to protect consumers and lowers the overall cost of the discipline system by reducing delay and the processing of cases by avoiding the filing of additional complaints. So why do I offer a tutorial on that case and the Ethics Hotline generally? It's because Randy played a critical role in formulating that correct and persuasive reasoning to the court. It seems obvious in hindsight, but at the time, that argument had not been made, let alone accepted, and Randy always plays a critical role. His first task upon returning to the Office of Professional Competence following the shutdown was leading the effort to restoring the Ethics Hotline. Shortly after that, he was promoted to Director of the Office around the year 2000. Since the year 2000, and while I've not looked at all of these personally, I'm fairly confident there's not been a filing with the California Supreme Court seeking to adopt or amend a California Rule of Professional Conduct without Randy's name on it. It will take far too long to list all of what Randy has accomplished in his career at the State Bar. However, and without question, Randy has been instrumental and served a crucial function in working on some of the most momentous changes we have seen in the legal regulatory framework of California lawyers over the last few decades. A few initiatives must be noted. The AB 1101 Commission, which led the way to adopting a death or bodily harm exception to an attorney's duty of confidentiality. The AB 2069 Commission, in which the legislature directed that the State Bar study and provide guidance to attorneys regarding the legal and professional responsibility issues that may arise as a result of the relationship between an attorney and an insurer. SB 1186, which provided for copies of ADA demand letters to be sent to the Office of Professional Competence to determine whether they contain an improper demand for money or a statement of monetary liability. And of course, he led the momentous effort of the Rules Revision Commission to revise the rules of professional conduct to become more in line with the ADA model rules by a date certain. And as we all know, attorneys are notorious for submitting things on the date of a deadline. It is important to recognize Randy got those rules filed with the California Supreme Court in advance of the deadline he was given. He also led the 10-hour new attorney training program, which are detailed trainings on a variety of subjects and topics, and many other initiatives that will just take far too long to describe. So why do I call Randy the Yoda of legal ethics? As you can see, his experience and knowledge is broad and deep, but when visiting and talking with Randy, it's just like consulting with Yoda. If you had to go visit him on the eighth floor, you would walk into the Ethics Hotline, where people are on the phone, papers are flying, conversations are happening, and it's like you're in a galaxy with things, you know, flying over your head. But you peer to the left and find his office in isolation by itself. It's like a planet on the Dagobah system, and you peer your head around the office in the hopes that maybe you can see him. Is he there? Is he in his office? And when he is, you take a deep breath, your shoulders relax, and you present him with an issue that you have studied top to bottom and know for certain. There is no way, there's authority that addresses that issue, and invariably he will find the authority. Without having thought, without having to look it up, he will know the authority. Some case cited in the Pacific Northwest Reporter, some ethics opinion out of Nebraska, some discipline case from 1946. He just knows it. And finally, you know, Randy was an extremely dedicated worker. He's modest to a fault. He didn't just give 110% to his job. He gave 1,000%. He rarely took vacation, and in the 13 years I worked with him, I can recall him calling in sick just once over that time. Randy is intensely private, but what I do know about him is that he's a loving husband to his wife Nilda and a doting father to his daughter Jessica. He claims to be a good ping-pong player, however, I've never seen him play. He likes jazz music. He's very adept at staying current on pop culture, including movies, music, and video games. On behalf of the California Legal Ethics community, I want to thank Randy for all he has done for the legal profession over his career. It is a source of great pride for me personally to have been able to work closely with Randy for 13 years. He's made me a better lawyer and a better person, and I will be forever grateful to him for that. In recent years, Randy would oftentimes wrap up his comments with a reference to a song or a movie, something out of pop culture or current event. I cannot sing to save my life, but I've been listening to the Foo Fighters lately, and I will say, when I think of Randy, I just always comes to my mind, I just say, there goes my hero. Watch him as he goes. There goes my hero. He's ordinary. Thank you.
Are you tearing? Are you tearing up, Randy?
Almost.
Truly, truly a fitting tribute, Mr. Tuft. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for taking that trip down your own memory lane and beyond for an incredible career here at the State Bar. And I have to say, I've only been here a short while comparatively, but I don't think that you oversaid, overstated anything at all, except for maybe the ping-pong part. But truly, this agency, this profession is better off because Mr. D. Fantorum worked for the State Bar as long as he did, as earnestly as he has. And there is a resolution later in our agenda where we will take official action, but you started such a good wave here that I don't want to lose the moment. Randy, I do want to offer my own personal thanks, nothing near as eloquently as Mr. Tuft did on behalf of the Board of Trustees. And if there's anybody on the board or here in the staff who would like to offer their comments, I would certainly recognize them now. Mr. Stallings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I don't think we should let Randy step away without coming in and playing everybody in ping-pong, but that's neither here nor there. Having walked through some of these massive projects, I can speak to Randy's dedication and just incredible experience in shepherding us through the rules revision process. And it's so easy to reduce years and years of hard work down into a couple different words, but that truly was a massive undertaking, and you took the ideas of California, the ideas of this board, and distilled them down into a work product that you can be proud of. Working with the 10-hour MCL requirement to help shepherd young lawyers into the profession of law is also something I think that you can almost look back on and say that you did what you could to help prevent harm to members of the public. And so, your legacy lives on. Absolutely sad to see you go, but hopefully, unlike Yoda and the Star Wars movies, you don't fade away, and that we can always count on you to provide us with your wisdom and insight. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings. Anyone else? Okay, that will move us. Trustee Shelby?
I just want to say, Randy, any time I knew that I had a meeting with you as a layperson, you were insightful. You provided things to me in terms that I could understand as a person who, you know, does not practice or has ever studied the law. And, I mean, you were always very thorough, and I knew any conversation that you were engaged in, you would provide the full scope and breadth of what needed to be discussed, of what needed to be addressed, and the action items to move forward. I'm kind of shocked to hear that you were here for 36 years. There must have been child labor laws that were violated at the State Bar that have thus been corrected, because you project youth. But I do know when folks have melanin in their skin, they tend to throw you off. And so, I just want to say thank you so very much, and I'm going to put in a plug. You're retiring, but I certainly hope that you will join the pool of potential appointees, because I feel like there's a great space for you somewhere as it relates to one of the subentities or the commissions. But my path was truly brightened having crossed yours, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelby. Anybody else? Okay, that's a good segue then into my report. And if I could have the Secretary put the resolution up on the screen related to Mr. D. Fantorum. Randy, I don't want to let the opportunity pass without you saying something if you wish to. The resolution's up there. Maybe if you start to speak, we will take it off so we can see your youthful face, as pointed out by trustee Shelby.
Chair Duran, members of the board. Andrew, I'm very sort of embarrassed by the kind remarks and accolades. I'd like to deflect them to the Office of Professional Competence itself and to all of the good staff, past and present, who have really been the people who have made all of the...
Lost your audio, Randy.
Am I back?
There, you're back. All the people who have been...
Yeah, all the people who have been the hard workers, the experts who have shepherded all of the programs and activities of the Office of Professional Competence are the real deserving recipients of these kind remarks and the legacy of the Office of Professional Competence in trying to promote professional responsible conduct by lawyers. When I took over the office in about 2002, I guess my feeling was that I didn't want to mess it up. I had some really good mentors who had come before me, and they had really tried to convey to me the importance of the professional competence function within the State Bar. It's not as big as admissions or discipline, but it plays a pivotal role, and I think Andrew mentioned that when he talked about the Enray Attorney Discipline System. So I just didn't want to mess it up. But as I look back now after many years since that time, and I guess the word news of my retirement has gotten out a little bit, and I've been receiving a lot of congratulatory remarks mentioning lots of things that I had forgotten, although when I clean out my office, I'm starting to remember a lot of this stuff, I do realize that maybe I didn't mess it up, and maybe I'm actually leaving it in a better place than it was before. At least a place where the board and Leo with the vision for preventative education and product regulation can actually take the office even beyond where it's been so far. So, thank you for all of the kind remarks. Again, I take it with a grain of salt, because it really is more deserving to recognize the office itself and all the staff that have come before. But it's been a great career, and I'm happy to say that I've been satisfied with what I've been able to accomplish with the State Bar, and I'm looking forward to a nice retirement. Thank you.
Congratulations, Randy. Thank you. May we see the resolution, please? I'm going to let folks read it on their own time. If you could scroll through it at the appropriate time, I'd appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to do something I virtually never do, and I'm going to exercise the prerogative of the chair to make a motion that we approve this resolution. May I have a second? Second, my Stallings. Could I have a roll call, please?
Bratton?
Yes.
Chen?
Aye.
Cisneros?
Aye.
De La Cruz, absent. No? Justino? I think you're muted, Justino. Just give us a hand signal.
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
I'm an aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The motion carries.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
Very nice. I appreciate it. If I could make one last request, it would be that you extend the same support that you've given to me over all my years to Erica Doherty, as she is taking over as the Director of the Office of Professional Competence. She has proven herself the able and expert person in all the areas of expertise needed to lead the office, and I look forward to her working with the board and with the senior management, again, to take OPC, you know, even beyond where it's been before. So, thank you very much again.
Duly noted. Thank you, sir. It takes us to item 41, the Executive Director's oral report.
All right. Well, I'm saving my remarks for Randy to a luncheon that we are having next week, and I plan to embarrass him quite a bit with more accolades. Steve pinged me and let me know that Randy is our seventh-longest-serving employee at the Bar. He's been here quite a long time. I want to thank staff in general, not just Randy, particularly those of you that work these meetings and that work to pull together these agenda items. It goes without saying, and often I don't say it, that it's a tremendous amount of work, but I really do want to recognize the fact that the workload is considerable. Many of you have been working not just to prepare for this board meeting, but on statutorily required reports, on other committee meetings that are underway, and many other initiatives. I want to recognize that we do a lot here. I also want to say that these are really challenging times for the State Bar. It has been nearly 25 years that we have gone with only one licensing fee increase. There are now at least 18 other states with higher licensing fees than ours, and of course, we are the most expensive state from a labor perspective in the country. And when I speak to my counterparts across the country, they are uniformly shocked, sometimes impressed, sometimes horrified by the sheer magnitude of what we are asked to do and are responsible for achieving. I know that I, our staff, and the board welcome and embrace the challenge reflected by our tripartite statutory mission. However, the idea that we will be able to succeed and to accomplish all that we expect of ourselves and that our stakeholders demand while being starved of the resources that we need to do so is not tenable. Further, as we struggle to keep up with the challenges of today, the legal market is changing rapidly, and I fear that we, as a regulator, are falling behind. In recent news, and just earlier today, we heard from one of our board members, ChatGPT and Do Not Pay present powerful AI tools that certainly have the potential for helping consumers seeking legal advice to receive that advice at a lower cost than a traditional attorney. But as of now, these tools are wholly unregulated. And those of you that are starting to see on social media lots of instances of people using these tools to write legal briefs to answer legal questions, we see it. You can see the promise, you see the opportunity, but you also see the perils. We are a legal regulator, yet we are not positioned either statutorily or from a resource perspective to regulate this whole new emerging field. So, again, you know, I say that this, I'm sort of imploring us as an organization, we need to do everything we can, both to effectuate the mission we have today and to achieve the kinds of relationships that we need to in Sacramento to enable us to position not just for the challenges of today, but the challenges of tomorrow, because otherwise we will continue to be falling behind. So, that's sort of a gloomy message, but I did want to use this time to make those points, and certainly, as we transition tomorrow to talking about the budget, they'll become even more relevant. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I'm going to editorialize a little bit again here, too, to say, in response, gloomy insofar as it's sobering, correct? I mean, you've, I think, very plainly and succinctly stated a lot of the challenge that this agency faces in a profession that is rapidly evolving along with the rest of the world, and to some degree, we are behind the curve a little bit. And I know that the trustees around the table and the staff whom you so ably lead are always thinking of ways that we can address the issues that you've identified and that present themselves on Twitter and in the newspaper every day, while at the same time meeting our statutory mission of protecting the public and having a disciplinary system that has the tools and the resources to do the job that we all know we're capable of doing. So, thank you for that. Also, with respect to some key players that assist in that mission, I do want to take the opportunity to thank outgoing Chair of the Assembly Judiciary Committee, Mark Stone, for the work that he and his committee put in over the years in the past. I personally enjoyed getting to know Assembly Member Stone and appreciate all his work and wish him well as he leaves the legislature. And I understand that Assembly Member Brian Minshane will take the helm of that committee. I look forward to meeting Assembly Member Minshane and working with him, as well as Senator Tom Humberg and the Senate Judiciary Committee as we move forward in preparing a fees bill and addressing the... uh, move forward in in preparing a a fees bill and addressing uh, the the issues that we also earnestly want to do the right thing about. Okay, uh, that takes us to the approval of the minutes. We've got December thirteenth, open session, and November seventeenth and eighteenth, open session minutes for your consideration. Are there any corrections to the minutes as prepared by staff?
Uh, move approval.
Thank you, Trustee Noel. Sir, a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Shelby. May I have the roll?
Bratton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz absent. No?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings? Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Minutes are adopted.
Great, thank you. Item fifty on our agenda is the consent calendar with items fifty dash one through fifty dash six. Does any trustee uh, want to pull an item for separate consideration or have a question on any of the items as presented? Okay, seeing none and recognizing again the tremendous amount of work that goes into preparing these items. Thank you. Thank you to the staff and Leah. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Stallings, so moved.
Motion by Stallings, second by Soell. May we have?
Mr. Mr. Chair, I I didn't get to my mic soon enough.
Okay.
On on the consent calendar, I was I was I was trying to remember if there is an item that is predicated on uh, the adoption of our budget that is in there. There's a contract item that is associated with that. Is the Polyfix contract uh, that item?
I'm going to look to either Ms. Wilson or Mr. Mazer to answer that question definitively.
Well, it's not um, predicated on adoption of our budget per se. The amount of that contract is addressed by the spending authority that the Finance Committee did provide to um, to staff earlier today.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'm I and with that, I will second.
Thank you, Trustee Soell. We'll take the vote.
Bratton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz absent. No?
Yes.
Uh, Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings? Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That takes us to the Board of Trustees sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee. The first item on that agenda is the approval of the November seventeenth, twenty-two thou- two thousand twenty-two open session minutes. Any corrections, questions, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a second? I mean, a motion and a second.
So moved.
Trying to get too far ahead, aren't I? Stallings, second. Uh, motion by Noel. The vote, please.
Bratton? Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz absent. No?
Aye.
Shelby?
Aye.
Soell?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next on the agenda is an overview of the Legislative Analyst's Offices Report regarding SB two eleven proposed standards. This item is being presented by Chief Trial Counsel George Cardona and Chief Mission Officer Yun Shang. If this is a presentation only, no recommendation will be presented. Good afternoon and welcome, Mr. Cardona. Ms. Shang.
Good afternoon.
I believe Ms. Shang is going to start.
We're ready for you to start, Ms. Shang.
Okay. All right, so today, George and I will walk you through the uh, most recent Legislative Analyst's Office report. In the report, the LAO office assesses uh, the SB two eleven proposal we submitted last November. So their overall assessment in uh, its executive summary, uh, they generally found the proportion some proportions of our proposal reasonable, but also identified some concerns. Uh, here's the overview. It's a overarching comments. They uh, encouraged the legislature to consider whether changes for additional oversight are warranted, and George will talk about um, more about the uh, additional oversight, what what that means. Uh, for case processing standards, uh, they found them partially reasonable. Their concern is the standards may be too aggressive. In terms of the case processing speed we proposed, uh, is significantly faster than what we are doing right now to meet the public expectations. Uh, for backlog metrics, they found um, them partially reasonable. The concern is the metric, the metrics right now measure close to rather than pending cases, uh, which to us is a easy fix. We can add pending workload in the final standards. For the staffing analysis, they agreed it makes sense to delay. Uh, the question is, when would be the most appropriate time for the comprehensive staffing analysis? Next slide, please. So the next section is background. I just want to point out in this twenty-five page uh, LAO LAO report, uh, from page three to page twelve, that's the background section. So they used more than one-third of the content to talk about the previous auditor reports, uh, what uh, what are the main issues based on on the previous audit audit reports or one-time evaluation? Uh, so those are the issues they raised uh, in the background section. Uh, first first one, budgeting process. And uh, in the later reports, they also talked about a lot about budgeting process. Then the the other one is attention given to the state bar court. So SB two eleven proposal we submitted mainly focused on the OCTC side work. Uh, their response, their assessment talked about the discipline system goes through uh, OCTC and the state bar court. Then the third issue they raised, uh, not necessarily issue, the third uh, part they covered is the overview of the discipline process, uh, which they explained the three stages of case process, uh, case processing, um, intake, investigation, and the charging. And our standards, the the case processing uh, procedure stop at charging, but they um, extended that process to hearing stage, which goes to the state bar court side. Then the fourth issue, uh, the fourth one, the fourth point they raised, uh, they provided the overview of the legislature's oversight of the discipline process, which include annual discipline report, state auditor, performance audits, and the one-time evaluation, for example, the two thousand nineteen I O A O report. The next pla- page, please. So um, they raised a lot of concerns with efficacy of the discipline process, reporting of data, and the use of uh, resources uh, based on um, twenty fifteen and the later on, uh, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, to audit reports. Uh, also, they talked about some other issues, two thousand seventeen organizational changes, um, two thousand nineteen request for additional resource, uh, resources. So our response by reading the background section is many concerns raised in the previous reports have been addressed by staff in response to each report. Uh, the concern discussed and the issues raised in this section of background were not part of the SB two eleven proposal work. Next, next page, please.
I just want to jump in um, on that last point. I think what many of us were surprised to see in the LAO report, quite an extensive focus on the state bar and budget, and the fact that our budget does not uh, is not approved by the legislature annually, doesn't go through the budget committees. We certainly were not asked to address that in SB two eleven. The LAO is, however, recommending, I think, uh, that we there's a change in our process. So that would mean not only do we go through the Judiciary Committee, but we would also go through the Budget Committee. Um, I don't know how that will be received, but certainly that is uh, an LAO recommendation that that I personally was surprised to see in the report.
Right, thanks. Then uh, we will talk about the LAO review of the SB two eleven proposal. Uh, they first proposed two overarching key questions. Then they provided specific assessment of three areas, case processing standards, backlog metrics, and the staffing analysis. They off- they also offered key questions and ideas for those three areas. Uh, the state bar staff provided responses to each area. George, go ahead.
Sure. So um, this is these were the two kind of overarching questions that they posed. One, um, are existing disciplinary procedures reasonable? And here they were suggesting um, that the legislature might want to look beyond our current uh, disciplinary process. And in particular, they raised one one thing as an example. Um, they noted that our case times, our average and median case times are increasing, and they noted um, that right now, part of this, part of the time to charging includes the ENEC, the Early Neutral Evaluation Conference. Um, and then they had this suggestion. Um, this is part and parcel of their suggestion that the legislature might want to consider looking at the disciplinary process as a whole, not stopping at charging, but including all the way to discipline actually being imposed. One of the things they said was that if they wanted to reduce charging times, um, the legislature could consider eliminating ENECs. Um, this was also a recommendation that was made by a couple of the experts um, who we retained in connection with preparing the report. Um, they had suggested either eliminating it or shifting it to after charges had been filed, so that it was more of a post-filing settlement uh, settlement process, um, in recognition of the fact that if both parties wanted to pursue settlement prior to charging, um, that could be done, but there wasn't necessarily a need for a formal ENEC. So this was raised by the LAO in the report as part of their discussion as as an example of something the legislature might want to consider in assessing whether the current framework for disciplinary proceedings is appropriate, or whether they want to make changes to that framework um, in connection with potential new case processing standards. The second question they posed is the one that um, Leah just mentioned, um, in connection with what level of legislative oversight is needed. Um, and they provided two options that they suggested uh, as potential mechanisms for more oversight. Um, one, including the state bar in the annual state budget process, um, which was just discussed. And the second was um, considering a shift in the fee structure to a fee specifically to support the disciplinary system um, as a mechanism for the legislature ensuring that that funding would be used for that purpose. Um, there's currently a twenty-five dollar disciplinary fee, and what they suggested was that the legislature could consider adjusting that fee and directing that it be um, placed in a special fund for whatever purpose the legislature thought it should be used for. So those were kind of the two overarching key questions that they identified. Um, then they turned to the new case processing standards and went through those. Um, as noted, they concluded it was reasonable to include both risk and complexity in our standards. Um, what they suggested, if you recall, our case processing standards had a single standard for intake. Um, then in investigations, it had four different standards differentiated on risk and complexity. They concluded that was reasonable. We had then proposed a single standard for charging. Um, the question they raised was whether that should be differentiated based on risk. Um, that's a question, you know, if if a decision is made to differentiate based on risk, that would be fairly easy to do. We could do that. Um, the reason that that was not done, as noted in the report, was that most of the cases that go to charging appear to be high-risk cases. To that extent, it made some sense to include that. But if there was a decision made, that could be incorporated fairly easily. The second major point they made was that the case processing standards don't reflect our office's OCTC's full workload. Um, this was a combination of two things. One, certain case types are excluded from the case processing standards, and so we do do work on other types of cases that are not included in the case processing standards. The second was that the case processing standards stop at charging, and so they don't incorporate or they don't reflect the workload that we expend on post-charging cases. Um, in other words, through the state bar court process and through the appellate process um, after that. So that was something that they noted. They also noted in connection this, if you recall, in our case processing standards, we proposed a new um, way of measuring the time for cases that went to charging with a suggestion that that clock stop um, at the uh, time that we provided notice of the right to request an ENEC if, in fact, that was requested, so that the time taken by the ENEC would be excluded from the time counted across, counted against OCTC in the charging time. Um, as they noted correctly, um, if that were adopted and if ENECs remain the same, that would mean that there was still a more part of our workload. In other words, all of our work doing the ENECs that was excluded from the case processing standards. They then then addressed uh, the their concern that the proposed standards might not be reasonable. Um, and this was their concern that the case processing standards might be too aggressive. Um, if you recall, kind of the core backbone of our case processing standards was looking at um, and identifying cases in which there were gaps that potentially couldn't be explained of sixty days or more um, during the process. And in coming up with our standards, our baseline was that we simply excluded all of those time gaps rather than shortening them. Um, their concern was that that might be too aggressive. In other words, there might be instances in which those time gaps should have been shortened instead of completely excluded. And their concern, as noted, was that if our case processing standards were too aggressive, it might affect the quality of case processing if we tried to move cases that quickly and it was too aggressive. Um, they also mentioned that they were unclear of the potential impact of operational and procedural changes that are underway at OCTC and or planned, and they noted that annual reporting requirements would need to be updated. They posed as questions for legislative consideration, um, what's listed here, focusing in particular on the areas that I just talked about. In addition to whether the case processing standards should span the entire time period through including post-filing, um, whether we should use risk in the charging stage. Um, they also commented on changes to OCT's organization and operation needed, um, and noted two examples in particular, specialized versus generalized trial teams, horizontal versus vertical prosecution for cases, and posed these as questions for legislative consideration, um, in addition to the others. Yes?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you clarify for me the horizontal versus vertical prosecution?
So right now, for uh, all of our cases, once they get past intake, they're assigned to a single attorney and investigator to handle for all purposes. So the investigation, charging, post-charging. So it keeps the case through its vertical, through its process with a with a single team to avoid handoffs to other people at various stages. Horizontal um, prosecution would, for example, mean intake, then it goes to an investigator, then it gets handed off for pre-filing or charging, and then it gets handed off for post-charging. That would be a more horizontal form of prosecution.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And what they were suggesting is that there should be consideration of whether some cases would benefit from having more horizontal prosecution versus vertical prosecution, and also whether some cases would benefit from having a team that specializes in that type of case. Um, as opposed to right now, most of our teams are generalists. They handle all different types of cases. So those are the the concerns that they were identifying there, and they were suggesting that this should be a question for legislative consideration. Um, I'll address that one first, and then I'll throw it back to Eun to address the other two, but that question to me, I don't think that that should be something that the legislature mandates. Um, that's kind of getting into the weeds of how we handle cases. Um, I think that if they want to set goals, um, they should set goals and then uh, basically leave it to us to try and meet those goals. Um, there might be changes over time in how we handle cases, depending on caseload, staffing, a whole host of other things, and having statutory mandated requirements for handling certain types of cases vertically or horizontally in essence deprives us of flexibility in terms of taking into account um, the day-to-day caseload, staffings, and other things, and uh, basically would would pin us to a certain way of doing things that might make sense now, but might not make sense down the road. Um, and so I do think that that should be not something that the legislature mandates, but is something that, once they set goals, um, leave it to us to basically assume the burden of meeting those goals um, through however we decide is the best way to handle cases. Um, so that's just my my side comment on that one. And then I think Eun wanted to address the first two staff responses.
So um, this section, the standard section, they talked a lot about methodological details. As George said, we can either clarify why we do things certain way. For example, we don't have categorization in charging. Uh, or we can actually meet in the middle way with them if uh, if they uh, insist there's a benefit of adding more categories in charging. So we think that's uh, quite solvable, and and we can discuss uh, the solution with the legislature or the LAO office about aggressive. About aggressive, whether standards are aggressive or not, it's a double-edged sword. So we were a little aggressive, as we acknowledged in the report, based on the sixty-day gap analysis. But the pressure is, even we post the so-called aggressive standards to the public, the public comments we received, you know, some of the comments are still like, not fast enough. They, they would like to see this even faster. I, we do understand LAO's concern there. If you are, if you want proposed aggressive standards, then the next natural question would be how many, how, how many resources you need to, to make such changes? So I think it, it needs to be a continuous discussion between the state bar and the legislature. Yeah.
So the next thing that they turned to was, if you recall, in addition to the case processing standards, we also proposed backlog metrics, first in each category and then as a whole. We proposed that the backlog be defined at the ten percent level. In other words, we proposed that we would have a, a small number, ten percent would be expected to be in backlog. So the first thing they addressed was whether an alternative definition of that was appropriate. And they suggested that fifteen percent could equally be a reasonable number. I don't think any of us disagree with that. That's just a choice that needs to be made as to what the appropriate number percentage for backlog is. They also noted that we did effectively set an upper limit goal for processing cases. This is some, the next one was something that Eun already addressed, which was the difference between closed cases in backlog and identifying pending cases in backlog. That's simply a, you know, the metric doesn't affect that. It's simply a determinant, it's how you calculate it. And so that could easily be accommodated. They also noted that there are good reasons why some cases may remain pending, including deferred or abated pending resolution of a criminal or civil case. I don't think we disagree with that. I think our suggestion in our standards was that cases that were deferred, the time in which they were in deferral or abatement would not be counted towards the case processing standards. So again, that's something that can be taken into account, and the questions here derive from that. So Eun, if you have anything you want to add there?
No, thanks.
So the next thing they addressed was the staffing analysis. And they first noted that they thought it was reasonable that we'd only provided preliminary estimates of staffing and resource need. They noted and agreed that the full impact of organizational and procedural changes wouldn't likely be known in two thousand twenty-three. They did note that they found some difficulty in assessing the impact of the additional positions that OCTC got back in two thousand nineteen and that our workload formula needs revision. The key questions for them were, when should we do the comprehensive staffing analysis? And this was, in fact, something that was discussed when the report was prepared. What should we propose as the timing? We originally proposed two thousand twenty-three. They effectively are proposing that it be pushed off further and that the staffing analysis not be done until after OCTC has made procedural and structural changes so that those can be accounted for and the legislature sets the goals that we know that we're going to be shooting for. So that's essentially the questions they posed. And I think our staff response is, you know, I think all of that could be accommodated. It's just a question of choosing when we want to do it and how far out we want to push it in terms of trying to accommodate and have it be done after whatever changes are made are done. They, so Eun, did you?
Yeah, I just want to add that my takeaway from this section is, first of all, I think, you know, the point and assessment is reasonable. But this naturally add a lot of work about periodic assessment. Because in this report, they are not talking about, you make some overall changes, then after three years, you come back to assess them. They are talking about basically every major or even some minor changes, operational, procedural, staffing changes. We need to document them, for sure. Then we need to assess them. Then I, I'm imagining how many staff members in my division that need to go into this part to assess changes. It's not only my staff's time, George's staff time. They need to provide, you know, this opportunity for, for the team to go into assess them. That's their staff time, too. So to me, this is, this, this request is not unreasonable, but it just goes to, goes back to the staff time and the resources. Next, please.
So this was their overall conclusion by the LAO. They found portions of the report reasonable, identified concerns, and identified the series of key questions that we've just gone through. Next steps are probably to work with LAO and the legislative staff to clarify the questions, address the issues. As Eun noted, as we make operational and procedural changes in OCTC, we are documenting those. Those are being documented either in policy directives or other places. So they will be documented. And then the problem is tracking and assessing the effect of those changes, particularly over time. And then at some